Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Oh, how about now? Is that better? Okay, well, we'll be back. Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me? All right, awesome. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to our annual statutory meeting. Before we get started, I do have some opening remarks. It's gonna be an exciting night. For those who are standing or who just want a little bit more air, I hear it's cooler in the overflow room, which is the memorial room. Straight down the hall to the left, there's some seats, and there'll be live video going if you all want to see that. Four restrooms, in case anyone needs to use it. If you can go straight out these double doors in front, and if you go straight ahead on the right-hand side, there'll be the men's restroom. Right out these doors, to the right will be the women's restroom. In case of an emergency, there are two exits. You can exit to the back of the room. You can make a right. There'll be a set of staircase that you can go down. It'll take you to the main level. Also, you can head straight out the double doors. Head straight ahead on the right-hand side will be the main staircase. All right. For anyone who has phones, please put them on silent. If you need to take a phone call, please step out into the hallway. The acoustics in the room are great, so we will hear everything you say. So side conversations, please take them out into the hallway as well. So we're gonna get started, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone can please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we're gonna get started today with the invocation and some remarks from Reverend Jeffrey Wheeler.
Good evening, everyone. I think we could do a little bit better than that. Good evening, everyone. It is an honor and a privilege to stand in this chamber tonight and to give great congratulations to this administration and to the city council. Will you join me in just saluting them on tonight? To my dear friend Caitlin, who made sure that I was here. She must have called at least seventeen times. And that's just one day. I would not miss it for the world, so we stand with you. And there's a scripture in the Bible before I pray the prayer of invocation that says, "If the kingdom of God is going to be destroyed, it has to be destroyed from within." There is nothing that the outside can do to destroy Mount Vernon. If it will stand, it will stand on the shoulders of greatness because of who we are as a community. But if it will be destroyed, it will only be destroyed by our hands. So my brothers and sisters, as we stand in this brand-new year, let's stand with a brand-new attitude, brand-new determination, that we are one, and we will stand together. Amen? Amen. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this time of sharing. We thank you for this moment. We thank you, God, for bringing us together, one family, the city of Mount Vernon. I praise you for the great work that you have done in us, the work that you have begun, and I believe that you will complete it until the day your son returns. Now, God, I pray that your hand will be on every man and woman, every councilperson, who will take the oath of office tonight. I pray, God, that there's no hidden agendas. I pray, God, that there's no sidebars. I pray that all that they do will glorify you and will bring this community and this county and this state greater than ever. I pray Mount Vernon will shine like the diamond it is. God, I thank you for their commitment. I pray not only for them, but I sanctify these very walls, God, that even when we're not here, that your angels will penetrate through these walls so that no evil will befall our city. Bless us and bless us indeed. In Jesus' name, let us say amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Reverend Wheeler. Wanna have the Star Spangled Banner by Tiffany Thriller? Please stand. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly gleaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you, Tiffany. That was beautiful. We're gonna move on to some remarks from our honorable mayor, Sean Patterson Howard.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I am so grateful to be here tonight in this statutory meeting to celebrate the swearing-in of our council president, Ms. Caitlin Gleason, our new councilman, Javon Boxhill, the re-swearing-in for his second term of our councilman Derrick Thompson, and the reaffirmation of our councilman Edward Potteet, and our president, well, our councilwoman Danielle Brown. I wanna say thank you to President Brown for the remarkable job that she's done over this past year. You know, the council is a legislative body, and it's always great in a legislative body to have attorneys, people who pay close attention to detail, people who question, and people who look to make sure that things are being done properly and order. And that's what Danielle did. She's very detail-oriented. She's a researcher. She questions. And, you know, people say, "Oh, well, y'all just all agree on everything," and that's not true. That's not true. We agree that we wanna see Mount Vernon be amazing. And we agree that this government deserves, this city deserves leaders who work together, who build consensus, and who do it in a way that is mature, that is thoughtful, and that is respectful to our community. And so that's what you get to see on these side of the doors. But on the other side of the doors, there's a lot of debate and discussion as to what are the right decisions and how do we arrive there? Because regardless of whether we agree on a decision, the paths to getting to different places take different thoughts, and that's what we do. So thank you, Danielle, for adding richly to that thought process and that discussion over this past year. And so Caitlin, as you are coming in, Caitlin's a questioner. When I was the planning commissioner for a brief time, I had the great opportunity to usually sit right behind Caitlin, as she usually sat right over here with lots of questions and amazing snacks, right? Lots of questions and amazing snacks. And Caitlin is, like the Jets used to have an old saying, "The ground and pound," and that's Caitlin. She's gonna take two yards, five yards, three yards, and get that next first down, and she's gonna be systematic, and she's gonna be thoughtful, and she's gonna be deliberate in how she moves forward. And so I look forward to working with you, and she survived her first Board of Estimate meeting today in grand style. It was a short agenda, but, you know, we thank you even for your presence there. I look forward to working. Caitlin is someone who, way before she even became an elected, absolutely was a community advocate, whether it was the soup kitchen, whether it was, you know, Mount Vernon for you and collecting food and giving out toys and giving out turkeys and hams, walking the streets, having a concern for public safety. These are some of the things that she was before ever becoming elected. See, you know, seeking elected office is not the first time that we should serve our community. We should be serving our community as everyday citizens because it doesn't require an honorable in front of your name to do honor and service to your community. And so in this new year of 2024, I knight you each honorable citizens of Mount Vernon and look forward to you working with us. To Javon, who is coming on, congratulations. For you who do not know, Javon also has his law degree, and he's a master and a wizard of numbers and finance. And so those are skills that we are really, truly looking for because a lot of the challenges in Mount Vernon have been legal challenges and need, again, that critical thinking, and also innovative financial approaches. And so someone to work very closely with our comptroller, he knows what that office looks like. He's not going to work in there, but having that skill set on the council is critical. And I think the last time we had the combination of a lawyer and an accountant was Lyndon Williams, our honorable Judge Lyndon Williams. And so that's a nice skill set to see, to come back to the council. And with our councilman Derrick Thompson, he is the people's councilman. He's gonna show up at fire shootings. He's gonna show up at anything that's happening in the community, and he is gonna advocate for the people time and time again. And he serves our children every day, some of our most vulnerable children and families. And so, again, committed beforehand. And since I spoke about everyone, you know, and Councilman Potteet. He brings to the council, you know, people said, "Well, he's a developer. Why do you want a developer on the council?" Well, he's not doing development in Mount Vernon, so that's not a conflict of interest. But there's a lot of development planned for Mount Vernon. And so when you have someone who can ask the tough questions and who can weave through the BS, and drill down and challenge those who are looking to develop in our community, those are important skills to have. And so we thank you. And he just recently showed us at Kwanzaa that he's an African drummer as well, so, you know. So I look forward to working with the council. They are not rubber stamps. Let me say that again. They are far from rubber stamps, just because we support one another and we know how to build chaos versus confusion. I mean, we know how to develop consensus versus operating in chaos and confusion does not mean that they're rubber stamps. Consensus is what the community asked for, and consensus is what we work hard to build always in the best interest of Mount Vernon. So I just wanna say congratulations to Caitlin as you ascend to the office of the president. Look forward to working with you much closer in all of the subcommittees that we have to work on and look forward to continuing to do work with the council. As we enter into this year, we will be reviving our Charter Review Commission, so please get your applications in if you're interested. I believe the deadline is January 31st. So, you know, whether we're doing comprehensive plans, charter reviews, and we're changing and creating new legislation all throughout the community to make Mount Vernon a place where we live, grow, and thrive together, and we make great progress, we need your help, and it's great to have great partners. And thank you, comptroller. You know, we talk about him all the time, but he is definitely the other leg of the three-legged stool that keeps this city going and that I have a pleasure working with every day. Welcome. Happy New Year. Everyone stay healthy, and I look forward to seeing you on Saturday. God bless.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're gonna have honorable comptroller Reverend Dr. Darren Morton come up and say a few words.
Good thing I'm in charge of the money. Greetings, Mount Vernon. It is a great pleasure that I stand here today on this day of this statutory meeting in which we, of course, welcome the new leadership of our legislative body for the city of Mount Vernon and all that they do. The mayor kinda went through all of the individuals here, but I do want to, first of all, thank Councilwoman Brown for her great leadership this year. It is not easy to be the leader of a body of people because you have to, one, have your own opinions, but you also have to also get consensus of others. And it's not always easy to do that, especially when you've got folks who actually have their own perspectives of what Mount Vernon is and what Mount Vernon should be. But we kind of worked through it. And so today, we wanna thank her for her leadership, and now the transition over to Caitlin Gleason. Having said that, you know, Caitlin I know well. And I know Caitlin well because we served on another board together. We both served at the library, and we both know what it means to be a part of leadership in a community that needs intelligent leadership, but needs compassionate leadership and also needs daring leadership. Sometimes you gotta step out, and you gotta go beyond what it is that people see because they don't necessarily know all that needs to be done. And so I am looking forward to Caitlin bringing her charismatic leadership to the council. And of course, yes, she's always gonna be the one that's gonna probe you for more and ask why and ask why again, and when she gets it, she's still gonna ask why, because that's what Caitlin does. And so congratulations to you and welcome to this leadership, to this next level of leadership anyway. And then, of course, we want to welcome Javon Boxhill to the council. And of course, I'm excited about him coming on board because he does know exactly what I'm dealing with, or at least he knows part of what I'm dealing with, because what he left is not what I inherited. But what I inherited, I know that he also knows how to help us get through what we need to get through. This year is going to be a very challenging year. I've said it before. You're also going to hear it soon in my letter to the mayor and the community about the 2024 budget and the fact that we are looking at a very tight year, a very tight year. And that means that we're gonna have to manage this budget well. We're going to have to creatively look for revenues that are going to come in and be able to balance what it is and also help us to build our fund balance. And so I look forward to being able to get down into the nitty-gritty and work with Javon, who's going to be in my chair, on those ideas. We are grateful that we've been making some progress when it comes to the finances of Mount Vernon. We were able to, of course, do a ban this year for $3.2 million, and so that was successful. Just got off the phone with the auditors for us to be able to know when we're gonna get this 2017 audit. And also, you know, they're put on notice that I may be looking in other directions if we can't move these audits more swiftly. And so those are the kinds of skill sets that I'm looking forward to working with Javon on. Of course, Derrick returns again just to be Derrick and to continue to provide the services to the community that he has provided. And of course, Ed will continue to be of great support. We've got some other things going on as it pertains to putting our assets to work, in which I'm gonna be traveling to Chicago in the next few weeks because we're gonna be unveiling the playbook as it pertains to how do we deal with kind of the resources that we have and the things that we own. And so I think I may have covered everybody, of course. The mayor, of course, is the mayor, and the mayor's already said it to you, right, that, you know, listen, we're a team. But we're not a team that always is in lockstep. There are days on which we have to make sure that we analyze what we do. And we have to analyze what is necessary for the city. The council is key to that. And this year, in addition to some of the other stuff that we're doing, we're going to be leaning on this council because I'm coming forward with a whole lot of policies that need to be changed as it pertains to how we do business in Mount Vernon, because that's going to help us to do better. And so I say all of that to you, Mount Vernon, because I want you to know that I appreciate the work that the council does. I absolutely appreciate the leadership of the mayor. And I look forward to us being able to move this organization, this city, actually forward in the best way that we can because you deserve it. And because you deserve it, we should give it to you. So congratulations to all who are here tonight.
Awesome. We're gonna have some of our other elected officials come up and speak, but before we do that, we do wanna have our city clerk, Tinesia Walters, come up and acknowledge some of our elected officials and dignitaries.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. Excuse me, I'm getting over laryngitis. The comptroller mentioned, while he was acknowledging everyone, he mentioned that it's not an easy task for the council president, Danielle Brown, to lead the council body. Can you imagine being the city clerk or the deputy city clerk and have to deal with five council members? It's no easy feat. I'd just like to acknowledge everyone that's in the room. Distinguished guests, welcome. And I thank you all for coming tonight, okay? First, I'd like to acknowledge our first citizen, Madam Mayor Sean Patterson Howard, Deputy County Exec Ken Jenkins, the president of the city council, the sitting president currently, Honorable Danielle Brown, our city comptroller that manages and watches every single step that we take with the money of City of Mount Vernon, Comptroller Morton. Honorable Jamal Bowman is not here, but his right-hand man, that's always about town, Louis Romaine is. I'd also like to acknowledge Honorable Ty Ray Woodson Samuel. I'd like to acknowledge all the city council members that are here. We have Honorable Caitlin Gleason, incoming president, Honorable Ed Potteet, the Honorable Derrick Thompson, and councilman-elect Javon Boxhill. Welcome. I'd like to acknowledge this, I'd say, young man that's always given me compliments whenever I see him with a warm welcome, former mayor Ernie Davis. I'd like to also honor our past council member, Ms. Robert Apuzo. Roberta Apuzo, I apologize. I'd like to also acknowledge past mayor Richard Thomas. Okay, forgive me. I'm just trying to scan the room quickly while I try to go down the list as dignitary as possible. Okay, now moving on to city court judges, we have Honorable Nichelle Johnson, Honorable Lyndon Williams, the Honorable Tamika Coverdale, Chief of Staff Malcolm Clark, Corporation Counsel Brian Johnson, the Public Safety Commissioner David Gibson. Another person that keeps us safe, keep the city safe, Fire Department Commissioner Deborah Norman. The Buildings Deputy Commissioner Patrick, I'm sorry, DPW, Deputy Commissioner Robert Hackett. Buildings Commissioner Patrick Holder. And I'm jumping around the room, and as I scan the room, I wanna acknowledge Chief All Affairs, Deputy Chief Sexton, Commissioner of Recreation that gets the party going, Commissioner Pickney. Deputy Commissioner Heidi Malik of Buildings. Okay, we have Office of Emergency Mike Montez. We have the newly-appointed Commissioner Tenille Peters of Recreation. I apologize. Please write it off to my laryngitis, okay? Human Resources newly-appointed Commissioner Tenille Peters. Executive Director of the Youth Bureau that has so many programs going on for our youths, Debbie Burell Butler. Debbie Burell Butler. Our newly appointed Commissioner of Management Services that hit the ground running since he started, Mr. Commissioner Perez, Juan Perez. Deputy Commissioner of the Legal Department, Johann Paul. I have. Ms. Alpert, please correct me. Oh my goodness, another person that keeps us safe, Deputy Commissioner Teddy Beal. All the planning, I'm scanning the room and I'm seeing the planning, the land use boards, the advisory boards, the members that are here. I thank you so much for coming. Curtis Bearden, he's on the Board of Ethics. Also, Leslie Alpert, he's on the Board of Ethics. I see Mr. Justino, who's on the Planning Board. Thank you all for coming. I'm sorry, who am I missing? Judge Armstrong, thank you so much. Let's acknowledge Judge Armstrong. Former councilman Jimmy Finch, former city clerk, George Brown. Assistant comptroller, Mr. Hamilton. Director of Constituent Services, Eric Crump. I'd also like to acknowledge distinguished pastors that are in the room tonight. Pastor, that's very funny. I wouldn't expect a pastor to be that hilarious, right? Because you're supposed to have, you're supposed to have this demeanor that is strict and very, but I'm looking for. Former city councilman Steve Horton. Assistant Corporation Counsel, Roston Dixon. I'm missing someone. Hold on. Former Commissioner Joan Iger. I am so, I'm so sorry. I'm trying to acknowledge everyone. I'm wishing everyone a blessed New Year, prosperous New Year. And if I did not acknowledge you by name, please write it off. Don't blame me. It's my laryngitis. Thank you all.
Thank you, Clerk Walters. I would never want that job. You're going to forget someone. It's, sorry, Clerk Walters. Thank you for doing that. We're going to have two more speakers come up. We're going to start with our honorable Deputy County Executive, the honorable Ken Jenkins.
First, Happy New Year, everyone. First, let me say I bring you greetings on behalf of County Executive Latimer, and it's certainly a privilege to be at home here in Mount Vernon with friends and family. You know something? If we did not recognize you, give yourself a round of applause. Because we are here and everyone in the room is important. Everyone in the overflow room or those watching and streaming are important as well. And certainly because this time of the year, this statutory meeting that we're here to recognize is such an important, an important feature. First, let me say welcome to councilmen, not councilman-elect, you councilman now, you already signed the form, right? It says councilman there. Let's give it up for Councilman Javon Boxhill. Congratulations on the hard work, my brother. And re-elected, certainly, council member, councilman, councilman, right? Derrick Thompson, let's give it up for him. And certainly, I know we're going to be here tomorrow night with our judge. We'll give that proper salutation. And certainly, our mayor will be here on Saturday, I guess, at Grace at 1:00 sharp for all of you. They're going to do that for Mayor Sean Patterson Howard and her reelection. You know, when we first started tonight and everyone gave it up for Danielle Brown, let's give that a real round of applause for the council president, And it's very special here in Mount Vernon, because, you know, every place does not do this. In my little, small, humble abode next door in the great city of Yonkers, we elect the council president. It doesn't rotate through everyone. And quite frankly, you get the chance to see the leadership skills of each one of the members of the council that we here in Mount Vernon elect and have them do their skills. And as was pointed out, it is extremely difficult. As my good brother, Ty Ray Woodson Samuel, County Legislative Woodson Samuel, as our majority leader on the Board of Legislators, will be able to attest, that is so difficult when you are elected as a council member and then you're working with your colleagues and you don't have any more power than anyone else. And when Lyndon and I were county legislators, and I was chair of the board, and Lyndon was vice chair of the Board of Legislators, we not only had to deal with the whole body, we also had to deal with our individual county legislative districts. And that kind of job that Danielle has done and everyone that preceded, Derrick Thompson and all the folks that preceded, have shown the kind of skill set that's necessary to work with your colleagues and move Mount Vernon forward. Let's give it up for Danielle one more time. As your mayor pointed out, it's been such a great opportunity to watch and be a part of and a support of the great city of Mount Vernon. And whether it's Darren Morton, Reverend, Doctor, comptroller, Grand Master-to-be, you know, all the kind of things that's all there, right? The fact of the matter is that working here and watching this from the place that I get a chance to do that, I got to say that you should give it up for all of your council members, all of your elected officials, for all the hard work that they have done to get us to this place. But today, again, we're here, Rev, I didn't get, yeah, Rev, I didn't get 17 phone calls today. She just texted me once, right? That's all I needed, right? And she said, okay, you come. I'm like, of course, I'm going to be here. Watching the elevation of someone like Caitlyn Gleason, who has been toiling in the vineyards, Mayor Davis, and working behind the scenes, Crystal Collins, doing all those kind of things that we say that everyone should do. The mayor said that, you know, before we get into seats and elected offices, a lot of time, we should be participating somehow in the community, like each and every one of your council members has done in their own way. But Caitlyn's been doing this job for over 40 years, right? She told me exactly how long, but I'm going to let her decide to do that if she wants to. But I will tell you that she mentioned that she was working as a teenager, a teenager stuffing envelopes for Mayor Davis, right? And being a valued member of this community, working so hard for the Democratic Party, working so hard in each and every one of the opportunities that she does, to see her elevate to the position of council president is certainly a privilege for all of us to show hard work does pay off, right? And being behind the scenes, people recognize even when you don't think they do. You know, I know this for myself. I know I go around the county and I get an opportunity to do a lot of things. And you never know who's watching you and praying for you to make sure you get done. So Caitlyn, congratulations. We're all here behind you. And we're looking forward to the great work that Mount Vernon is going to continue to do. And again, I'm going up to Albany tomorrow to hang out with the legislature as their opening session starts tomorrow. And I'm making sure to stop by. And certainly, between Speaker Hasty, which is right on the border here in Mount Vernon, and right next door the other way, Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, to make sure that we're working with the governor and everyone else to continue Mount Vernon's path moving forward. And it is not easy. It's not going to be easy. There's going to be rough days. But as we all say, Mount Vernon is going to continue to be that shining beacon, that pearl, the place that we all love to call home. And congratulations, Mount Vernon. Keep moving strong. Congratulations, Caitlyn. Congratulations, Javon. Congratulations, Derrick. Let's keep going. Your county friends will be with you. Have a great night.
All right, next up, we're going to have our majority leader of the Board of Legislators, Honorable Ty Ray Woodson Samuel.
Happy New Year, friends. Happy New Year. All right, that's better, that's better. So happy to be here for a good friend of mine, Caitlyn Gleason. You know, Senator Jamal Bailey actually hosted a press conference a week or so ago, and he did a tremendous job of securing money for the Dole Center, for our fire department, and for our PD. And it was all initiated by our incoming council president. That's what she does. She's a connector, you know? And this job isn't easy. And so before I actually move forward, I want to recognize her family members. Can you, can you stand up if you can, Caitlyn Gleason's family members? Let's give them a bigger round of applause, please. I wanted to do that. I mean, we recognize, you know, 80% of the room at this point. So I want, so, but I wanted to recognize her family members, because when you're in elected office, your family, they serve with you. It's a lot of late nights. I mean, we're here about an hour. Council meetings are usually at 7:00, same at the board. And so there are some late nights, a few birthday parties you're going to miss, some trips you're going to miss. But we have a fiduciary obligation. We took an oath to look out for the people of our district and here, the city of Mount Vernon. And so I want to thank you, Caitlyn, for putting in the time, sacrificing so much for over 40 years. You know, you and I served. She's 25, y'all, don't worry about it. No, but, you know, we've served together on CSA, right? The Community Service Associates. We've served together on the Fleetwood Neighbor Association in so many capacities. I mean, you walk the walk. And Mount Vernon will truly, truly benefit, yes, from your leadership. Truly. I mean that. And to our incoming councilman, my brother Javon Boxhill, you know, he works in tandem with the County Board of Legislators, with the executive team up in White Plains. His business acumen is second to none. He's going to be a true asset to this city. And so I look forward to your leadership, my brother. But with that being said, I also want to recognize somebody who's not in the room, somebody who actually ran against Lisa Copeland, a former clerk, district leader, a member of the Black Women's Political Caucus. She served as council president here. She's going to be missed as well. I think she brought a lot to the table. And so I wanted to recognize her on the record as well. Let's go to Ed. So Ed, obviously, you bring development experience, economic, you know, development specifically, you know, just keep doing what you're doing. And I understand you're going to be chairing Public Safety, the county and the capital budget. We secured $3 million for that ShotSpotter technology. So you and I will be meeting alongside the mayor and the PD. So we have some, some work to do, my friend. And finally, I'll get to Caitlyn, excuse me, Danielle Brown, our president. It was alluded to by Ken Jenkins, to lead a body of legislators. It's not easy, right? We all have our own agendas, but you have four different people pulling in their direction. In my case, 16 others. So it's a tall, it's a tall tale and a tall, tall job. And Derrick Thompson, of course, you being the people's champion, showing up everywhere, my brother, you are an example of what a public servant is. All right? So, yes, give him a round of applause. So I don't want to take too much time. I just had to show up and be here for a good friend of mine, Caitlyn Gleason. We have politics and then we have, you know, personal friends. And even beforehand, she was a great friend, always supported me. So happy to be here to do the same. Thank you and God bless. Happy New Year, y'all.
Thank you to all the electeds for speaking. Want to make two more acknowledgements. I hear our school board president is in the building, Lorna Curran, so I wanted to acknowledge And also wanted to acknowledge our very own deputy city clerk, Donna Jackson, who's here working alongside the city clerk. So now we're going to get to the good part. We're going to start with the swearing in of Mr. Javon Boxhill. So I'm going to invite the honorable Judge Lyndon Williams up.
I just want to raise a few remarks before I get to the task. Forgive my voice, I'm losing it. But on behalf of my colleagues, Judge Johnson, Judge Nichelle Johnson, Judge Coverdale, we're part of the city's judiciary. And it's great today, as we do this, that we have all the levels of government here. Got the, we're here for the legislative branch, the city council. But we also have the mayor's office and her administration, which is the executive branch, and the judiciary, which all of us are here to really make sure that we celebrate this annual statutory meeting. I happen to have sat on this board for quite a while. But I can tell you, there's nothing greater than when you're in the midst of starting government anew every single year, because it's a new start and a fresh start. But I want to, first, let me also say to the outgoing president, Danielle Brown, that congratulations on the great, great term that you've had as the council president. It's a tough job. I know how difficult it is, haven't been there. And the incoming president, Caitlyn Gleason, continue to be as vivacious as you are with respect to the city, right? Because she is. I mean, Caitlyn really, really is about cheerleading for Mount Vernon. And that's important. We all do. We all do it in different ways. And I can't, can remember that Caitlyn always talked about, what are we doing to bring, bring things into Mount Vernon, bring some assets in, bring some resources in. So that's a great thing. Edward Potte, great job as a councilman. I used to sit in that seat at one point until I rotated over to that seat where Derrick Thompson is. I love that seat over there. But I liked that seat because you could see who was coming in. But it's a great thing. And I'm here to swearing a young man that really is impressive. I can tell you that Javon Boxhill brings considerable qualities that will greatly benefit this city of Mount Vernon. And it's important. It's very important. Because when you sit on these boards, whether it's the city council, the Board of Legislators, you bring skills. Others bring different skills. And it's making those skills work that causes the government to really function in a very, in a positive way. I have known Javon and followed his career development while I was a councilman here. He was the first deputy comptroller in the comptroller's office. And then I became a legislator and I followed his career at the county, when he was basically a deputy budget person in the legislative branch before joining the executive branch, the county executives' office in the budget, in the budget office. So he brings tremendous experience as well as areas that we really need people to be, to be really focused in. Budget, budgetary issues. You go to budget every year here. And it's not a, not a simple thing. The mayor and the comptroller, part of the executive branch, they deliver the budget to the city council. The city council has the final vote in approving what the budget is under the charter. And so it's important to have that ability to work together, but work. And so it's important to have that ability to work together, but work constructively. In other words, being able to not only point to things that are wrong, but point to how you can make them better. And that's what I think he brings that are so, so special. Capital budgeting, an issue that really the city faces, about how do we pay for and repair the infrastructure of the city, the buildings and so forth. That's an important part of it. Understanding the issue of bonding. In other words, how do you get municipal bonds issued in order to pay for capital projects in the city? All of those skills is what Jayvon brings. Now, it might not sound exciting, but it is important. I can tell you that. And as, as a person who came out of a financial background, oftentimes when we speak about things, they're not, they're just dry issues. You know, you're talking about budgets and stuff like that, that is not... But when you, when you turn the page after you've actually done your work, then you really see how important it is, because the residents of Mount Vernon deserve no less. And I can tell you, the residents of Mount Vernon has done a great job in deciding to make this gentleman here, Jayvon Boxhill, dear Councilman. So let me ask him to step forward, and his family to step forward as we take the oath of office. Sing. You can sing also?
Bishop Derrick Thompson, he's, he's training me. I'm not ready yet, but soon.
He learned, he learned, right?
Come on. Brother, sister-in-law, nephew. You guys are family too, right? Last I checked.
I think what you do is you stand here, you're gonna put your left hand on the Bible, and your right hand you'll raise. So you'll keep your right hand here. Hello. We get all the family around. Come on up, come on up, this is important, this is very big. Wanna come this way, come this way. Oh, you mean, okay. Balance it out, right? Left hand on the Bible, raise the right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Jayvon Boxwell.
Jayvon Boxhill.
I said Boxwell. That's what I said. Like, okay, I'm not gonna blame it on the Jack Laren Chinese. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the office...
Of the office...
Of City Councilmember.
Of City Councilmember.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Happy New Year. Happy and healthy and prosperous New Year to everyone. This is, I don't know, I'm lost with words right now, because it's, it's an amazing feeling. I look around the room, and it's, it's literally all family here, really all family. Everyone in this room almost has played a part in getting me here to this stage. And I just want to personally thank some people who have been, you know, integral. I'm not gonna make that mistake, I have my cheat sheet, so... Sorry if I read some of it. But first and foremost, I want to thank God, obviously, because God has really ordered my steps and given me guidance on this journey, so thank you, and thank you, Mount Vernon, for believing in me, right? So thank you again, Mount Vernon. Just having the faith in me, the confidence that I can go out and do this job in. I'm not gonna let you down, guys, so... So first, I want to thank my family. Normally, normally I'm a person of a few words, but can you guys bear with me? Give me a little moment to, because my family has been so important, and we really discussed every single thing about, you know, when I decided to run. I spoke to my dad, I spoke to my wife. Like, we, we sit down, and like, what do you guys think about this? So they're, they've been so, like, when I'm saying important, I couldn't do it without them. So I'm gonna start, thank you to my wife. Thank you, Amanda, right? Amanda really holds it down. You see her with the two young girls, I mean, they, they're sweet girls, but they can be a handful at times. And I mean, she, she, she really, I couldn't do this without her. She's my best friend, she's my, my chief advisor, right? You know, sometimes you get up in the mic, and I'm like, you think I should say that? And she's like, no, 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 don't say that. I'm like, but I think, I can say that. And she's like, no, let me tell you why you can't say that. And it disappears, so thank you. Thank you for always being by my side, and, you know, it's, it's not just being by your side. There's, there's something just special about when you come home, and there's, like, you want to come home, you know? There's that type of peace, you know, you're excited to go home and see her face, that smile. That smile is literally always there. Like, it's not just today because she's happy, that smile is always there, and I don't know how she does it, but I'm thankful for her. God was good and blessed me. Pastor, what, what, what does the scripture say? It's, it's good to find a wife, right? It's a good thing? Thank you, so God was good to me, and that's it. And my little girls, Tabitha, Esther. Tabitha, she was on the campaign trail, she was part of the team. I mean, she was there knocking doors, she was giving out literature. Vote for my daddy. Vote for Jayvon Boxwell, Councilman, right? You remember that, right, Tabby? And Esther, she's my little sweetheart, she's a tough one. But she gives me smiles all day, so... My dad, my dad was officially my campaign manager, Dad. A lot, a lot, a lot of people don't know this, but my father's been running campaigns since Jamaica, since his days living in Jamaica, and it's just been a part of him, and he helped out with Marine Walker's campaign. He helped out with Judge Coverdale, he helped out with Judge Blackwood, right, successfully. So that, he's been doing this for a long time, so I figured, if he did it for all these other folks, then... He owes me one, right? So thank you, Dad. Thank you, Mom. My, my mother, she's a, she's a praying mom. She's a wor, she worries sometimes, too. She's like, you sure you want to do this? You know, people can be mean, they can say bad stuff about you on Facebook, but I appreciate you, Mom, you know? Don't look at Facebook sometimes, you know? But no, it's, it's important when you have a mom that really prays for you, because sometimes you don't see what the obstacles are in front of you. Sometimes you don't see what the obstacles that you missed, that God blocked for you. So thank you for always praying, even sometimes when I forget to pray, and, you know, I appreciate you. And even my, her sister's right next to her, Aunt Molly, it's one of my other moms, so... Aunt Molly is, she's the aunt that comes over when you're a kid and says, you haven't made your bed yet. And then she turns to my mom and said, you gotta make him make his bed. So, no, I appreciate you guys. It's just so much love. My sister's here. Hi, Kim. Kim is, Kim is, Kim, Kim was like a tomboy growing up, you know? She was mini me, she wanted to be like me so much, so, but... Luckily she found a nice husband, and who doesn't mind her tough ways. But I love my little sister so much, you know, she's just been so good to me. And how can I not mention my brother in the back, Officer Boxhill? Can you, can you just wave? And his beautiful wife sitting next to him, and my nephew. So me and my brother, growing up, we used to fight every day. But it's like, as we became adults, we became so close that we share everything now, and I can't go on this journey without, you know, my brother by my side. So thanks for coming, I appreciate you, I love you, so... Okay, so can I, can I get two more minutes? So, sorry. Let's see. Thank my wife, right? My dad. Marine Walker, you guys remember Marine Walker? So I have, I really have to acknowledge Marine, because when Marine was the Controller, she thought this young man, this is going back ten years now, right? When I started in the Controller's Office, and she thought I was a smart young man. She gave me a chance, and she gave me a big job as the first Deputy Controller, and I, and I think I did the best that I could, and I, I appreciate Marine so much for believing in me. And one thing I could say about Marine is that, what I, I mean, I learned so many things working under her. But one important thing, maybe probably the most important thing I learned from her is that whatever you came into that Controller's Office for, it didn't matter what the reason was, she made it her business, she made it all of our business, that we made sure that we helped that person, right? It didn't matter if it was for taxes, or it was for a will, or it was for a tenant issue, it didn't matter. Marine, if we couldn't fix it in this office, we better find the solution or get that person to the right place to find the answer. So I appreciate that, and that's something that I want to carry over to the Council. I don't want to say that, oh, that's not my job, that's not my department, that's not my, you know, that's not my problem. So it's always our problem, so I appreciate you, Marine, for that. The whole Democratic team, Majority Leader, Tyree Woodson, Madam Mayor. These folks have been so supportive on the whole campaign. My, my, my big sis, Tamika Coverdale, so me and Tamika go back long before this, this, I thought of running for office. She's been a family friend, and just someone that you could always rely on and call on, and I appreciate you, Tamika. Honorable, Honorable Lyndon Williams. So Lyndon Williams is, like, like he told you, we, he said he followed my career, but I followed his career, right? So he's, he's always been a pillar in this community and somebody that I looked up to, and he, he mentored me. So I, there's never a time I called on Lyndon, and, I mean, a cell phone or whatever, and he always picks up, or he calls me right, right back, and just a supportive person. He's honorable in not just in title, but in the way he lives his life. And everybody in this community can attest to that Lyndon Williams doesn't, he doesn't look down on people unless he's pulling them up. So I appreciate you, Lyndon, and thank you for that. So my whole Democratic slate, the team, you guys, I'm gonna forget your names. Malcolm, Eric, everyone that worked on the campaign, I appreciate you. The whole volunteers, Condell, Condell probably had the most important job. He's my treasurer, the Assistant Controller. So Condell, he makes sure the finances were in order, right? And he did all the mandatory filings, I appreciate you, Condell. And Condell's my lifelong friend, so we, we've been friends since, since grade school. So I appreciate his, my brother, and he always has my back, I appreciate you. So who am I forgetting? Let me, let me look around. Ernie Davis, Honorable Ernie Davis. He's another person, I mean, he's a huge pillar in this community, but just accessible. He's been super accessible, and I just appreciate that so much, that if I call on him, he'll pick up the phone and, and talk, he'll reason with me, and he'll explain to me, yeah, you should do this. I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get to Jen yet. She, she's right here, she's right here, don't worry. And my, my whole, like I said, the, the campaign team. I spent so much time with Councilman Derrick Thompson on this campaign. So I, I didn't really, we weren't close before, I didn't, I knew him as Councilman Thompson, but we really got to know each other better on this campaign, and he became my brother, you know? We, we ate at his house, we've hung out, we've spent a lot of nights together just talking about politics and talking about the, the mission. And one thing I learned about Derrick Thompson is that, someone said earlier that he's a man of the people, but he really has a huge heart, and he really, really, really is looking out for the betterment of Mount Vernon, and that, that I appreciate so much. To my, to my other Councilmembers, President Brown. President Brown, that's my girl, we go back, right? I appreciate you so much. Ed Potte, you know, I appreciate you guys, all your support. And incoming President, President Kaitlyn Gleason. She's probably one of the biggest, most vocal of my supporters, and from day one, she, she's been out there for me, and I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, I really appreciate it. Jen. I didn't forget you, Jen. Jen, so can Jen, can you stand up for a second? So Jen, I, I met Jen when I was working in the Controller's Office. She, we worked together, and Jen has become one of my best friends, the most, one of the most reliable people in my life. I can count on her for anything. She got so much stuff going on right now in her personal life, and she doesn't miss a beat. She does, she did everything for the campaign. I mean, talking about the website, Facebook, flyers, pictures, everything. And sometimes I go on the website, and I'm like, oh, let me change something, and I like destroy everything, and Jen goes back and she has to fix it, so I appreciate it. And Jen is also my oldest daughter's godmother, so, and she's, she's there for Christmas, birthdays, and everything, and I thank you. Thank you, Jen. I know I'm gonna forget a million people, but I'm just happy to be here, guys. I'm happy to be here, Mount Vernon. This job, it's such a serious job, I take it seriously, I think it's an important job, right? Mount Vernon is, is, is an amazing place, right? It's an amazing place. Nobody seems, that's something to clap about. Mount Vernon is an amazing place. It's an amazing place. And Mount Vernon is not without its problems, for sure. Under the leadership of Sean Patterson-Hire, we, we definitely going in the right direction. That is hundred percent for sure, and I look forward to, yeah, more good stuff coming from our mayor and a continued partnership, so... I'm, I'm really excited about this, and this is, this is something that no one person can do on their own, right? This is a collaborative effort, and the Council, the Mayor, the Controller, and everyone sitting in this room. Everyone is here for the same reason, right? We all care about the city of Mount Vernon, or you wouldn't be here right now, and, and that's what's important. So together, we will work together. We're not gonna always agree on every issue, right? But guess what? We're gonna work hard diligently and respectfully, right? Respectfully, this is not gonna be no more must-see TV, like, those were the old days, right? So, and, and, and it hasn't been for a long time, and it's commendable that we, we're gonna disagree, but we're gonna respect each other, and we're gonna come to a consensus that what's best for Mount Vernon, right? So you guys just pray for me, pray for me on this walk, this journey, and thank you all again. Thank you, my family, and I'm ready to work, so thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you, Councilman Boxhill. If, if I, I should've said Boxdale, right? Thank you. If I can give you one piece of advice, is take in tonight, right? Take in what it means, because today will be the day that you are liked the most, tomorrow... Tomorrow, you're part of the system, right? No, honestly, but it's an honor to have you on, and we're excited to get work done. We're gonna get into a roll call before we start the statutory part of the meeting. Clerk Walters, may we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Council President Brown. Councilman Boxhill.
You gotta put the mic on. There you go.
Here?
Councilman Potte?
Here.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson?
Here.
And Council President Brown?
Here.
You have a quorum. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Walters. Do we have, uh, we're gonna move into Acting President Pro Tem, do we have a motion to elect?
Thank you, Council President, I would like to make a motion to nominate a council member, Councilman Derek Thompson, to be Acting President Pro Tem of the Mount Vernon City Council.
Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
We have IT over here, okay. Councilman Potte?
Council President, I would like to make a motion to close the nomination for Councilmember Derek Thompson.
I second that motion.
Awesome. In a second, we'll have a roll call for closing the nomination for Acting President Pro Tem of the City Council. All right, can we have a roll call on closing the nomination for Acting President Pro Tem of the City Council?
Okay, roll call, Councilman Box Hill. Councilman Box Hill?
Oh, sorry, yes.
You have to get used to that. Councilman Potte?
Turn his mic off, maybe that'll help it.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I have a roll call on the election of Councilman Derek Thompson as Acting President Pro Tem? We gotta vote first.
Okay, Councilman Box Hill?
Yes.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to elect President Pro Tem?
Yes, Madam President, I make a motion to elect Councilwoman Danielle Brown to be nominated to be President Pro Tem of the City Council of Mount Vernon.
Second.
Do we have a motion to close the nomination?
Make a motion to close the nomination?
Second.
Can we have a roll call on closing the nomination for President Pro Tem of the City Council?
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye. Can we have a roll call on the election of me as President Pro Tem?
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Council President Brown?
Aye. Do we have a motion to elect the City Council President of 2024?
Yes, I make a motion that Councilwoman Kaitlyn B. Gleason be nominated for President to the City Council, so move.
Second.
I make a motion to close the nomination?
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call on the closing of the nomination for President of City Council?
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Absolutely.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Brown?
Aye.
Okay.
Can we have a roll call on the election of Councilwoman Kaitlyn Gleason as the President of City Council?
Councilman Box Hill?
Aye.
Councilman Potte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Let me think about it first.
And Council President Brown?
With great pleasure, congratulations.
So of course, we're gonna take a couple of minutes, right? Because everybody else had something to say, so I just wanted to say very quickly, very quickly. Everyone said a lot about Kaitlyn Gleason tonight, uh, but I wanna give a personal note that I know everybody doesn't know about. Uh, Kaitlyn Gleason happens to be a very good friend of mine, a supporter for years. Uh, I worked with her father, who was the fire commissioner, uh, who was a good friend of mine and one of my guiding, uh, lights in the city of Mount Vernon when I worked here under the beautiful administration of Judge, or actually Mayor Ernest D. Davis. The family was very strong in the community, as mentioned, before being sworn in as honorable. But at the end of the day, even when you're sworn in as honorable, the jobs here really don't pay that much. And so in fact, everyone probably on this stage, including the judges, qualify for what we call public service loan forgiveness. So don't think just because honorable is there, somehow they've arrived and, uh, are living in this lap of luxury. No, it's still community service, it's still giving back, it's still taking on, uh, public scrutiny, uh, to the highest level. As an attorney, uh, for this city of Mount Vernon for more than 14 years, uh, I know what it is to be in this room. I know what it is to deal with public scrutiny and Kaitlyn Gleason happens to be one of the best people, uh, that can do this job. She was a sister to me even before she was anything. I'll give you a personal story, when I was running for election, Kaitlyn hated my clothes. And she said, you know, she wouldn't complain too much, but one day she just drove up to my house with like a bag of clothes that she went and purchased for me and said, here, this, we're gonna wear this, and it was beautiful stuff. And she said, it's okay to put a little lipstick on once in a while, you can put some lipstick on, you know? And she was just really a true sister in the sense of the word, that's something that people would not know. Uh, yes, she works in the community, but she also values personal relationships and actually helping someone on a personal level. And of course, being true to Kaitlyn Gleason, she told me, your clothes are terrible. But then she bought me the clothes that she thought I should wear. And so you can't tell me that's not a true giver, a community person, absolutely, even at its essence on a personal level. And I love Kaitlyn, I love her family, she and her family have worked tirelessly for this city in public service, even though they were honorables and her father was the police commissioner, we don't get paid a lot of money, firefighter and the fire commissioner. So I appreciate Kaitlyn, I think it's a wonderful thing, she's so happy to serve and I love her dearly. And I wanna say congratulations, I know she's gonna do well in that room. And I would be remiss if I didn't say to this entire council body, value your legal team because they're there with you. And I wanna say, Brian Johnson, who sits here as the Corporation Counsel, to this team of City Council people, take the guidance of your legal team when you can because they are the legal people, they're in the courtrooms fighting for this city and they know a lot of the legal stuff that maybe, with the exception of Council Brown, who was also City Councilperson, may not really be knowledgeable about what's happening in that courtroom. But Kaitlyn, you're gonna be wonderful, I know she can be tough, but she's fair, she's unrelenting, she will not compromise if she feels very strongly about something. And that's the kind of leader you have to have. She will balance being a member of that board of estimate and contract, representing her council body to the best of her ability and also making those tough decisions. So Kaitlyn, I love you and congratulations. Did you raise your right hand? Let's make sure the mic is positioned properly.
Yes, ma'am.
I?
I.
Kaitlyn Gleason?
Hereby solemnly affirm?
Hereby solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States?
Of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
The Constitution of the State of New York?
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon?
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon?
And will faithfully discharge the duties?
And will faithfully discharge the duties?
As President?
As President?
Of the City Council?
Of the City Council?
For the city of Mount Vernon according to the best of my ability?
For the, uh?
For the city of Mount Vernon?
According to the?
According to the best of my abilities?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's it, nice and loud. I'm not doing this podium, I'm sorry. This is a great, great feeling to be here tonight. The one thing that I stressed over, over the course of the last few weeks is writing a speech, I'm not really good at writing a speech. So one of my sister friends, Claire, my, my girlfriend Lisa, said, just write down some bullet points and go from there. But then I walked in this room tonight and this front row right here has got the history of Mount Vernon. And I want everybody to give them a round of applause. Mount Vernon is a very, very special place. And the reason why it's so special is everybody knows each other. That's why it's so easy to choose people to get up at a ceremony like this to speak about you because they know you. They know that you care, they know that the love that you have for your city is above none. So I wanted to get up and I wanted to thank a lot of people, but this journey for a Gleason to become a council member started with David Alpert's conversation with my father over 40 years ago in Mayor Thomas Sharp's kitchen. And David Alpert had asked my dad to become a councilperson and my father said no. And I do believe that my father regretted it. Fast forward, uh, maybe 30 years? My father sits down to dinner with a very close family friend, Robert de Benedictus, and basically bullies him and says, you're gonna make sure that she becomes a City Councilperson. Because my father didn't think he would be around to see it. But what's so funny is everything in our family revolves around the New York State Lottery. I know, but there's a number in our family that is 126. And 126 stands for my grandfather's birthday, which is December 6th, and my father's birthday, which is December 6th. So in Gleason Family Forum this morning, I just happened to go on newyorklottery.org and what was there but 621, 126 backwards, which came out on New Year's Eve? Which is just my father's way to insert himself and say, I'm still here. Everybody on this council has got a talent. I am basically handing over my baby public safety and codes to somebody I trust 100%, Ed Potte. Ed's like, I have no idea what I'm doing. But we have such great people in place in the Department of DPW, Buildings Department, Police Department, that they're gonna guide him. I had a conversation with Kenny Plummer a few weeks ago and he said, what is your vision as Council President? And it shocked me and I went blank because the only word that went across my head was work. That's it. Not, it, it was just work, pounding the pavement and making sure that things move forward here in the city of Mount Vernon. Moving forward is very, very important here. We were stagnant for so long, but I don't want people to look on our past mistakes as mistakes. We have to look on them as lessons because each person in this room tonight, you'll see that there's different factions of, uh, people who were attached to different political candidates. I'm very proud that they're here tonight because they all have an opinion that we need to represent. It doesn't matter where, where you were before, it's how we move forward together and that everybody has a seat at the table, that everybody is able to contribute, whatever specialty they have. Everybody is here to make sure that Mount Vernon prospers, this is a labor of love. Of course, I wanna thank my whole family that's here tonight and my, basically my stepparents, Richard and Carmen Macchio. You could give them a round of applause. And two other very special people in my life, Roberta Apuzzo, who's the former council president. A guider, a mentor, Ernie Davis. But I think, Ernie, I want you to stand up, I know you're hiding. Ernie was the first person here tonight. It's no shock that he would be the first person here tonight because Ernie has sat me down, he has yelled at me, Roberta has yelled at me and, you know, trying to teach, um, these, um, mature adults how not to speak on Zoom was challenging during the Democratic, uh, convention process. Mute is a very good, um, tool on those computers. But I also wanna thank my husband and my daughter, my daughter's my secretary. And my husband tells me everything I'm doing wrong and how to make it better, I keep saying, you should run for council. But then there's Oscar. Oscar has been a great cheerleader, he has been standing behind me for over 15 years, pushing me and making sure that I do the right thing and that I do the right thing by the city of Mount Vernon and by the people of Mount Vernon. So I just wanted to thank you, Oscar. You have supported so many candidates over the years. Then go back two years ago, and I'm not gonna make this long, Eric, who every time I walked a flight of stairs, he'd be like, okay, I'll go up those, you go down. So Eric was always there for me, he was very helpful. Um, there's also people here tonight that I wanted to make sure we recognize because it goes to the history of Mount Vernon. We have former council member Jim Finch here. And right next to him is our neighboring town council of Palom, Maura Curtin. Maura has a long history in the city of Mount Vernon as her brother is a firefighter here and her father was a firefighter here also. And one of my very good friends, William Wagstaff, who is our special prosecutor here in the city of Mount Vernon. You could speak to me after the ceremony and ask me why I mentioned William Wagstaff, but he, he has been a great supporter for us. And I think it's really important that we support each other and we support the people that come out of Mount Vernon. They're doing great things all around the county, the state. And I just wanted to thank the mayor and all the elected officials. You guys said some really nice stuff and I'm so glad that it is on, uh, film and it's being taped. And that's it, everybody, my feet are numb, so I think it's about time we stop. But I just wanted to thank you again, I think it's really important that, um, the one thing I want you all to take away from tonight is to work together and understand that everybody has got a place and everybody's opinion really matters. And the one thing you can take away is also that you have to have care and love for the city to actually be an elected official. You can't come here thinking that you could get away with something because it's not gonna happen, our people are smarter than that. And we deserve better than that. So I promise you, this team will be the most responsive team that you have ever seen in city history and I'm happy to lead this group forward, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay, can everybody see me or I'm too short? Can you hear me? Did I pull this out again? Okay, can you hear me? Okay, right now, we are going to, I'm asking for a motion to, the president submits the 2024 Standing Committees, which are as follows. Legislation and Public Works, Danielle Brown as Chair, Javon Boxill as Co-Chair. Human Resources, Derek Thompson as Chair, Edward Potite as Co-Chair. Public Safety and Codes, Edward Potite as Chair, Danielle Brown as Co-Chair. Finance and Planning, Javon Boxill as Chair, Derek Thompson as Co-Chair. Can I have a motion to approve the Standing Committees?
I move to approve the 2024 Standing Committees.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the Journal News as the official city newspaper.
Before we move on to the newspaper, we should do the Rules of Order.
Yeah. I have a resolution, number one, to adopt the 2024 Rules of Order, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to adopt the Journal News now as the official city newspaper.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Council, oh, I was in the, Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
No.
Okay, so we have four ayes and one nay. Thank you. Okay, we are going to do the appointment of the clerks. Well, the appointment of the clerk.
I have a resolution appointing Tinesia M. Walters as City Clerk for the City of Mount Vernon. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Okay.
I.
I.
Tinesia Walters.
Tinesia M. Walters.
Hereby solemnly affirm.
Hereby solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon.
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties as City Clerk for the City of Mount Vernon.
The duties as City Clerk for the City of Mount Vernon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, I have a resolution appointing Donna M. Jackson as Deputy City Clerk for the City of Mount Vernon, so moved.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call. Councilman Boxill.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Potite.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council President Gleason.
Aye.
Thank you.
I, Donna M. Jackson.
I, Donna M. Jackson.
Hereby solemnly affirm.
Hereby solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon.
The City Charter of the City of Mount Vernon.
And will faithfully discharge.
Will faithfully discharge.
The duties as Deputy City Clerk.
The duties as Deputy City Clerk.
For the City of Mount Vernon.
For the City of Mount Vernon.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
For remarks and benediction, I ask my good friend, Assistant Pastor Patrice Wiles-More to come up and say a few words to close us out for the evening.
Good evening, everyone. Truly, I thank God for the opportunity to come before you today on behalf of my friend, my sister. When our honorable judge talked about her being a sister, she is. But let me tell you what, I'm so proud. When I thought about the outgoing president, I wasn't able to be here last year because of my work assignment. But when the outgoing president is a young lady that you coached in basketball. When I was the coach at Mount Vernon High School, Danielle Brown was one of my captains on my basketball team. Yeah, I'm proud. I'm proud. And I'm so grateful to all, it's elevation time. So congratulations to you, to you, to you, to each and every one of you, to my mayor, my sister, to all of the dignitaries. I mean, when you said this Mount Vernon is community, I do know most people in the room, Uncle Ernie. I thank, you know, I thank God for being here, my brother, all of you. I want to just talk a little bit about my friend Caitlyn. I met Caitlyn 13 years ago. Excuse me. My mom is dying at Calvary Hospital. And I would go see her every single day. And one day, the mayor, Ernie Davis, came. And I walked outside of the room and he was leaning up against the wall sobbing. I didn't understand why. But right next door to my mother was Commissioner Gleason. My mother went to elementary school, junior high school, and high school with Ernie Davis. And Commissioner Gleason was one of his best friends. And so he sat on the wall and just slid down the wall sobbing. He was like, "My best friends are leaving me." I never met Caitlyn, I didn't know who she was. And then my mom passed away and the commissioner passed away and Lisa Copeland introduced me to Caitlyn. And we have been kindredly connected as sisters ever since. In 2016, Shamoya McKenzie was killed here in Mount Vernon. And I started a professional women's basketball team in Mount Vernon called the Mount Vernon Sham Rocks in her honor. And every game, Caitlyn is there. She supports everything about the Mount Vernon Sham Rocks. A lot of you might not know, we play out of the Boys and Girls Club of Mount Vernon. And Caitlyn Gleason is right there every game in the hot sun at the Mount Vernon Boys and Girls Club, cheering us on. She shows up when it's least expected. We can text each other all hours of the night and we answer. So when she asked me to come and to give remarks and to give the benediction, I couldn't help myself. I had to be here. She didn't text me 17 times, but she should have. Because if my pastor, Adams, didn't say, "I didn't know you were on the program," I would have been at home with my feet up on the couch. Because I forgot. But I'm so glad that I'm here. I want to just say something to all of you. I love this city so much. And when you have to be an elected official in this city, it's supposed to be rough because we're not supposed to make it easy. We're supposed to ask for what we need and what we want. And even though sometimes we're friends, we have to disagree. But we don't have to be disagreeable. And so I'm grateful that you're fighting for the cause and that you can disagree and not be disagreeable. Disagreements don't have to be on Facebook, don't have to be on TikTok, don't have to be on Instagram. When we grew up, they said, "You fight at home, but you'll get out in the public and you've got to be on the same page." And so I'm grateful that this team has been on the same page the last four years. Even though you might argue and disagree, you've been respectful and I appreciate that as a citizen of the City of Mount Vernon. In the words of Les Brown, something simply says, "If you want a thing bad enough to go out and fight for it, to work day and night for it, to give up your time, peace, and sleep for it, and for all that you dream and scheme is about it and life seems useless and worthless without it, if you gladly fret for it, sweat for it, and plan for it, and lose all terror of the opposition for it, if you simply go after that thing that you want with your strength and capacity, faith, hope, and, excuse me, with your, I try to do this all the time. So if you simply, if you gladly go, if you simply go after that thing that you want with your strength and capacity, faith, hope, and tenacity, faith, hope, and confidence, and stern pertinacity, if neither cold, poverty, famine, or sickness and pain, and body and brain, can keep you away from the thing that you want, though dogged and grim, besieged and besetted, and with the help of God, you'll get it." Let me tell you, these things that you want, you're going to lose your sleep for it. You're going to lose your peace for it. You're going to lose your time for it. But you've got to continue to go after that thing that you want. And sometimes you've got to fret for it and sometimes you've got to sweat for it and sometimes you've got to plan for it and sometimes the opposition is going to go after you. But you cannot be afraid of opposition, but you've got to move towards opposition. You've got to use your tenacity, your capacity, your hope, your confidence, your pertinacity. You've got to use all of that because those are the things that are going to move Mount Vernon forward. And sometimes there'll be cold nights. And sometimes there'll be hungry nights. And sometimes there's going to be sickness in your body and in your brain. But no matter what you're going through, we've got to move Mount Vernon forward. So though dogged and grim, you've got to go after that and make Mount Vernon better. Every day, we've got to be better. We can't go backwards anymore, but we've got to go forward. And we need them, we need our executive, our judicial, and legislative branch to move us forward so that we can be successful. Mount Vernon, don't let them sleep. Because they chose these positions. They decided to be in these positions for us and for our city. So if you've got ideas, if you've got thoughts, if you've got things to make us better, bring it forward so that we can be successful. But do it in a way that is respectful and do it in a way that makes us better. Because the people out there are waiting to talk about us. The reason why they say no to this news, no to that news is because as soon as something negative comes up, they put us on the front page. And when something positive comes up, we're in the back of the page. But I've come to tell you, we're going to make front page news because we're going to do it right. And we're going to do it together. And so with Caitlyn at the helm, our mayor at the helm, and these amazing councils with us, we're going to do it. How about you? Do you think we're going to do it?
Yes.
Do you really think we're going to do it? All right. Well, I'm going to do it right here with you. We're going to close out in prayer because prayer seals the deal. And we're going to seal the deal with prayer tonight. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you to celebrate, to elevate, to educate, to do all that needs to be done today. We thank you because if it was not for you, we wouldn't be here today. We thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community, as a family in the City of Mount Vernon. And we are so grateful for the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for our mayor and we ask that you strengthen her. We thank you for our judges, we ask that you strengthen them. We thank you for our executive branch, continue to give them witty inventions and strategies. We thank you for our city council. We thank you for our county legislator and what you're doing in his life. We thank you for our deputy county exec. We thank you for all of the lawyers and all of the commissioners. We thank you for all of the workers. We thank you for the ideas. And we ask that you continue to grow us and build us so that we can continue to be the premier city in the county of Westchester and in the state of New York. We thank you for all that you've done. But we look forward to what you're getting ready to do and what you're doing right now. Continue to blow our minds, show yourself mighty, show yourself strong in this city through us as people that will walk the streets and to talk and to show the love of who you are in us, in the people, in the community. We thank you right now in your precious name, we pray, and the name that we know you as in each and every one of us in a personal experience with you. We thank you right now, God, for that. We ask that you continue to bless us, we ask that you continue to keep us. We thank you for our new city council president, President Caitlyn Gleason, and for all that are going to be working with her. We ask that you continue to have your way in our lives. Guide, guard, and govern us so that we could continue to be lights that can shine so that men might see our good works. But in the midst of all things, that you will get the glory. And so we thank you right now. We ask that our lights shine in the City of Mount Vernon, that we will continue to be a blessing to others. We thank you right now in your name, we pray. Amen, amen, and amen.